Well, welcome everyone. It it's nice to be here. I was looking through my presentation notes. Has it really been a year since I've been here? Uh, that was the fastest year of my life. Um, sorry it took so long, but good to be back. Uh, for another Happy Valley Town Hall. It's December fourteenth, twenty twenty-three. Everyone see all right? We've got a few, well, actually all the first district analysts here, Christina, Shane here in person and Jamie online. Uh, this is a hybrid meeting, so that's why uh, I'll be talking to the screen sometimes. We've got a few folks joining us online. Thanks for coming, guys. Um, and we also have special guests, Santa Cruz City Park Superintendent Travis Beck with us here tonight. Uh, to talk about um, all your city parks' needs. Um, and we've, we're saving the best for last Travis, so I'll just give a a few uh, general updates about the county and then give you an opportunity to take the mic and talk to these good people. So let's dive in. Um, you know, I just wrote down a few, a few things that I think are most impactful for the Happy Valley community here. And they include a low-impact camping ordinance that we're discussing at the board now. Uh, some, also some other changes coming with the sustainability update. Fire, as you can guess, uh, disaster communications, roads, a general discussion about how we fund roads and fire. Um, and then we'll talk about city parks. So let's jump in. Um, this is, first I'll talk about the low-impact camping stuff. So this is kind of like Airbnb for a campsite. Um, if you're familiar with uh, sites like Hip Camp, which you can see here on the screen. Um, it's basically a way to, like I said, find a campsite, whether it's for an RV or slightly more improved. We've seen some use of it increase in the county and we're looking at creating an ordinance to formalize the way uh, these sites can be created. You know, initially we were just looking at larger sites, I think, um, might have to be able to think of minimum of five acres with their initial suggestion, and then they could have up to like five campsites. But this discussion is happening now. I'm sure there'd be some parcels uh, where it would be relevant in Happy Valley, and so just throwing it out there in case uh, any of you have any experience with it. Of course, this campsite that you see here on the screen is in a vineyard, and so I'll use the opportunity to mention that uh, the sustainability update, which is actually the largest change to our general plan in twenty-five years. Board of Supervisors approved it a full year ago. And the Coastal Commission is finally hearing it. I think Friday, we're hopeful they're gonna pass it, which means it would finally go into effect. The biggest thing that impacts the Happy Valley area with the sustainability update is actually allowing uh, more agribusiness. Um, I mean, but I mean, fruit stands and small-scale agricultural ventures like uh, breweries or wineries. Um, as well as uh, an event permit on properties eight acres or more to host weddings and other things. Um, so just some different opportunities that perhaps some of you guys would be interested in taking advantage of. Any feedback, welcome. Okay, moving along to some fire issues. Uh, I'm excited to share that the SoCal San Jose shaded fuel break was funded. What you see here is actually a picture of the Summit Shaded Fuel Break, which has actually uh, been completed. Uh, you can see the before and after picture there. And the concept with the shaded fuel break is to uh, really clear a lot of the underbrush uh, next to the major roadway on both sides, keep of course the big trees in uh, intact so that they can provide shade and keep the um, understories uh, cool. Uh, but that then ultimately if a fire was coming through here, a catastrophic fire, this would provide some kind of a break. Uh, so again, we've done that for Summit Road and we received a nearly million-dollar state CalFire grant uh, to do something similar on SoCal San Jose Road. Uh, and we'll get started with the planning process next year and expect to actually do the work in twenty twenty-five. The county applies for a lot of these state grants to deal with vegetation management. Um, and this is just one instance where we've uh, won a good one, and I look forward to doing more projects like this. The other thing is that, you know, really throughout the first district, there's a picture of Thurber Lane where there's some eucalyptus trees. Uh, we run into the issue of individual property owners who just are not maintaining their property, um, and that are creating a fire risk. And um, so in fact, some of these eucalyptus trees here on Thurber are in the county right-of-way, and we're actively removing some of those that we know are both a fall risk that could block the road and a fire risk, uh, but the majority of them are on private property. And so to deal with those, um, really the best option we have today is our weed abatement ordinances. Um, and the Central Fire District has one. It's basically says wherever rees weeds are growing upon any property in the district, the Central Fire Board may declare a public nuisance. And if the profit, private property owner does not abate them, do the work themselves and build the property owner. Uh, Scotts Valley Fire District, I was doing some research, actually has a weed abatement ordinance as well. I, in my preliminary review, couldn't find if they actually have this clause that they can declare public nuisance, do the work and build a property owner. But there is something there to work with, um, and so if you, if there's any properties that uh, have been or you think are a fire risk, uh, by all means, let me know. I'm happy to work with um, you and Scotts Valley Fire District to try to address it through the existing ordinance. As we get into the rainy season, I'm happy to report that we do have a lot more seventy-two-hour backup uh, power installed for communications facilities throughout the county. Um, in fact, fourteen out of sixteen sites in District One that uh, Comcast maintains have been issued permits for backup power. Uh, and two others are in process, and a lot of those have actually been installed. And countywide, over half of all uh, communication infrastructure sites have installed backup power so far, so. Can't always prevent the power from going out, but uh, by having this backup power in place on communication facilities, hopefully you won't lose internet as well and with the general, with the great, glad to hear it. Um, yeah, hopefully then with your generator or whatever you have, um, you'll be safe and sound for a little while. And of course, another important reason to maintain the communication infrastructure is so you can get alerts. Um, if you're not already receiving alerts from the county, I want to welcome you to sign up for our Cruise Aware messaging service. It is uh, available at Cruise, uh, I think this is just cruiseaware.com. Anyway, just search Santa Cruz Cruise Aware and you'll find it. Uh, sign up and you can choose to get alerts by text, phone, or email. And anytime there is a, a major disaster, um, or issue that you should know about, we'll, we'll let you know through your chosen communication method. All right, moving on to some road stuff. This complicated graph explains that uh, long story short, at the Regional Transportation Commission, at our meeting last week, we funded the Highway seventeen corridors resurfacing project, which includes Branson Forty Drive, five point, almost two miles of it, and SoCal San Jose Road uh, to the tune of one and a half million dollars. And so we're moving forward with resurfacing projects on both of those. Uh, because they are vital alternatives to Highway seventeen that we want to keep open um, in all weather and are just you know, obviously important arterials in our, in, in this community. And ultimately for the entire county. Um, so this was money that was coming from the gas taxes that we divide up through the RTC. Uh, and this is actually all the county projects that were considered for this, um, and you can see they, uh, we consider them very important, and that's why we put them forward for funding. If you drive on SoCal Drive, uh, we are also getting a light, the last stop sign that's currently there at Robertson Road. That will soon become a stoplight and probably get installed in early twenty twenty-five, um, and help all traffic move through there a little bit better. Now, a less rosy picture about road uh, repairs. So the twenty twenty-three storm damage sites, to see a map of here, you can see that we had two hundred and fifteen total storm damage sites from last winter alone. Uh, and we have managed to fix eighty-six of them in this year by issuing emergency permits, uh, getting out there and just doing as much work as possible as fast as possible. This really is a departure from how we approached these projects in the past where we, you know, did full permitting process and it could take as many as three years. So we're still working on storm damage sites from two thousand sixteen, seventeen storms. So that's the good news. We got a lot of these projects done. Bad news is um, that because we've had so many federally-declared disasters in the last six years, seven in fact. There were three during the sixteen, seventeen storms, three federally-declared disasters. And, and when that happens, basically it means that this was such a bad problem or such a bad incident, we're declaring it a federal disaster, and FEMA will reimburse seventy-five percent of the cost of damage that happened during that disaster. And then the state usually will do another twelve and a half percent, leaving us locally with twelve and a half percent of the cost of repairs. But there's been a lot of them. The stormed uh, storms in twenty seventeen, COVID-nineteen shelters, the CZU fires, and then uh, two declared disasters during twenty twenty-three. And the problem is that FEMA has been extremely slow to pay us back uh, or pay us what they say they will. So you can see that over the course of these seven uh, disaster events, we have, are, we still have nearly a hundred and sixty million dollars of unpaid claims. And so at this point, we did as much repairs as possible, but we're really running to the point where we don't have any more cash on hand as a county uh, to do these repairs without getting some of this money paid back. Um, so you can see overall, we've just been paid about forty percent uh, of what FEMA has promised us from these last disasters. Still waiting. In fact, I mean, they've paid us less than thirty-six percent of the, the um, claims for the CZU fire alone, less than twenty percent for the C, uh, for COVID-nineteen shelters. We're hopeful that we'll get some reimbursement soon for the COVID-nineteen shelters. Um, uh, another option that the county is considering is in February, some kind of lease revenue bond in order just to have some more cash on hand to be able to deal with disasters that might come up this winter. Um, but it is something where we are, you know, it's absorbing a lot of staff time, staff constantly reaching out to FEMA to try to get them to fill these claims. Um, and of course, it is a concerning situation for the county as a whole. Part of the reason why FEMA is not faster to pay up, while they're not funded enough by Congress, considering how many disasters are happening across the country. Uh, what you see here is all the disasters that happened in twenty twenty-three. There have been twenty-five of them so far. Um, and these are all the billion-dollar ones, so twenty-five billion dollars in damage at least. Uh, FEMA is currently funded about ten billion dollars a year, so they're just not being funded enough by our federal government to keep up with the pace of disasters that we're seeing. Which is one reason why the county, uh, we voted at the Board of Supervisors to put a sales tax measure on your uh, March ballot coming up, that would propose to increase the sales tax in the unincorporated area, that's the green part here, uh, outside of all the cities, from nine percent to nine point five percent. You can see that uh, currently the county is tied with Capitola for the lowest in our area, uh, lowest sales tax in the area. The cities all have their own sales tax rates, uh, with Cap, or sorry, Scotts Valley and Watsonville being at nine point seven-five percent, the city of Santa Cruz nine point two-five. And they're talking about, uh, the city of Santa Cruz is also seeking another half-cent increase that would bring them to nine point seven-five. Um, so the reason again that um, we are, you know, asking voters for this is just to have honestly more money on hand to deal with these kinds of disasters, both road repairs uh, and of course, to deal with uh, fire issues, vegetation management. Um, and ultimately we might need to negotiate a new contract with um, CalFire to make sure that there's firefighters here in the county dedicated to our area, even in the case of statewide uh, incidents of concern. Right now, when there's a big fire somewhere, all our CalFirefighters leave the county and we're left pretty shorthanded here. So uh, that's the rationale. I'm happy to answer more questions about it. Later on. Of course, another question that comes up when we talk about taxes is, well, I just wrote a giant property tax check. Why do you need more money? Why aren't my streets paved with gold? In fact, uh, it was such a big check. Um, the answer to that is that the county actually only gets thirteen percent of that check that you just wrote. Um, thirteen cents on the dollar. As you can see here with this graph, the majority of the funding goes to schools, fifty-seven percent. Um, and that's actually one of the lowest rates that comes to the county in the whole state. We're fiftieth out of fifty-eight counties as far as the amount that we get back uh, of the property taxes. The average statewide is twenty percent going to counties. Difference for us would be uh, significant, um, and so it's really something that we need to correct and which I worked with um, Supervisor Friend, and we made one of our legislative priorities this year is asking the state to adjust the rate of property taxes that we get back to uh, to the county. Um, if you'd like to help take action on this, you can sign this petition, fix SCC Roads or bit.ly slash fix SCC SCC Roads. Uh, and we're getting uh, close to over seven hundred and fifty signatures. One question that comes up all the time is, well, if you're gonna adjust this pie here, does that mean that the schools are gonna get less money? Because they're getting the most share of the property taxes today. Well, here's the answer to that question. Um, the state does not fund all schools evenly, not in the least. And in counties where less money from property tax rolls go to fund the counties and cities, um, the state will backfill the schools more. It's a bit complicated, but you can kind of see um, an example here just within our own county. So there's this thing called the State LCFF entitlement, which is like the local control funding formula. It's the minimum amount that the state thinks every school should be funded. And then there's local, local property tax revenue next to it. So if the tax revenue is not enough to cover this minimum amount, the state will make sure that the minimum amount is met. If the tax revenue is more than the minimum amount, the state will kick in maybe a little bit of money, but not a whole lot. So let's look at how that plays out. Uh, here's Happy Valley Elementary School. The state has determined that the minimum amount Happy Valley should get is nine hundred and seventy-eight thousand dollars. Local property revenue funds one point one million dollars. Uh, and so basically, they, they think, well, the school's good. We don't need to kick in all that much money. In fact, when the property tax revenue is greater than the, the minimum amount, it's called a basic aid district. Or basically no aid district might be a better uh, term for it, because it means the state says you're good, you don't need a whole lot of money. So only seventy-three thousand dollars comes in from the state. And the average state funding per pupil is six hundred and seventy-seven dollars here in Happy Valley. Let's compare that to Live Oak. They only, uh, they get, they, the state determines the minimum should be about sixteen point six million. Only five million, five point four million comes in from taxes. The state funds that school eleven point one million dollars, which is equivalent to six thousand four hundred and seventy-eight dollars per pupil. So a ten X difference almost between what students here in Happy Valley are getting in state aid versus what students at Live Oak Elementary are getting in state aid. Uh, in fact, Happy Valley is getting one of the lowest uh, amounts per pupil from the state of any school district in our county. To make matters worse, basic aid districts, the state says, well, since you're fine with your local property tax revenue, they're not funding the pre-K programs at all with any state revenues. Other school districts uh, that aren't basic aid, the state is stepping in and fully funding their pre-K programs. So the way that schools are funded is actually not equitable at all either. Uh, and it's kind of a shell game where the state is hiding um, some of the inequities in the property tax distribution as well. So ultimately, we need to uh, create more equality in the way that um, all of our schools and students are funded as well as in the way that uh, local governments like the county are funded. Well, that will ultimately create less money for the state, but it will give us more discretion over the money that's available here locally so that we can solve some of these uh, emerging problems like responding to climate disasters. Um, listed here some other potential funding sources to deal with these um, emerging issues. So I mentioned property tax portionment reform. Um, we're actually also getting the short end of the stick on sales taxes as well, especially with online sales where companies are saying the point of sale is where the warehouse is, not where you're buying the product. And so a lot of sales taxes are basically getting moved out of our county. Um, when you buy something in the store, that's the point of sale. That money comes back to the county. If you buy something online, they're saying point of sale is whatever, um, San Bernardino County where the warehouse is and the money leaves. I mentioned the county sales tax, a potential way to get uh, some more funds to just, this would certainly be the fastest way to improve the balance sheet and respond to these disasters better. Uh, the Land Trust is also uh, collecting signatures to put a parcel tax on the ballot for November of next year. They're calling it the Santa Cruz County Safe Drinking Water, Clean Beaches, Wildfire Risk Reduction and Wildlife Protection Act. That would be about eighty-seven dollars per parcel. Of course, we can get this FEMA reimbursement problem solved, and if you'd like to help, contact your Congressman Jimmy Panetta uh, or your senators, including Alex Padilla. Uh, probably the, the one who has a better chance of staying on. Um, and tell them we need FEMA funded better. We're certainly doing everything we can at the county to, to impress that on him or both of them. Uh, but you, they also directly work for you as well, so let them know. And then finally, there are these grant opportunities I mentioned that our Office of Response, Recovery and Resilience keep a flying floor. That's, that is state money. Um, and federal money. In fact, this is the, this one I mentioned here is the BRIC grant, Building Resilient Infrastructure in Community, which is a FEMA grant. Uh, I think we applied for as much as thirty million dollars to proactively reduce uh, fuels and hazards uh, and build resilience in the community. That's all I've got for you. Um, I'll now invite up our Parks Superintendent, uh, Mr. Travis Beck. And um, you know, I think probably the reason there's so few people here tonight is because Travis has been doing such a good job with the city of Santa Cruz uh, on the issue of cleaning up along uh, De La Viega Park, but um, Travis, you just want to let us know about. Um, yeah, actually, if you don't mind standing over here, um, yeah, exactly. Um, I'll go ahead and stop sharing this screen. Yeah, if you just stand somewhere in the general vicinity here, it's fine. The, the computer will pick you up.
Okay. Well, good evening, everyone here and, and joining us online. Um, actually, again, I'm, I'm Travis Beck, Superintendent of Parks with the City of Santa Cruz. The invitation said Tony Elliott, Director of Parks and Recreation. I'm not Tony. Um, Tony fell ill today, so I'm uh, filling in for him. Uh, but wanted to share some updates on what we're doing at De La Viega Park in particular. And um, also a couple other things happening in our community parks, which serve really, you know, residents from the county and the region as a whole. So the thing I've heard um, most specifically mentioned is uh, the large homeless camp, which was present for over a year um, at the corner of De La Viega Park by the Branson Forty Dog Park there. And the city has developed um, an overall approach to managing homelessness that we've been implementing for um, about a year now, a little over a year since the closure of the large camp that was in the San Lorenzo Park benchlands. And that's a unified response across the city in which we start with outreach as an outreach-first approach and um, offer shelter and other assistance to people who are living in the camps. In De La Viega Park now, we have our Armory um, Shelter where um, we have over a hundred people who are uh, taking advantage of that opportunity to be out of the weather and be connected with case management and stabilize their lives. So the outreach is the first step. And then after that, um, campers are notified, um, usually several days to a week in advance that their camp will be closed. And our uh, police team that is part of our homelessness response team contacts people there, posts the notices, let them know of the closure date. And then when the closure date arrives, people are actually, you know, asked to move out, um, and generally they do comply. And then uh, we follow up with cleanup and on cases of large camps like this, we uh, have contractors um, from the community and the region who are paid to do the actual cleanup work. So uh, that camp was a substantial camp. We had probably a dozen tent sites there, some of them with multiple tents. Lot of debris that had accumulated over the time that the camp was present and uh, had gotten down into the waterways and I'm clearing a vegetation and terracing the hillside. So it's quite a big impact and we're very happy to get that addressed. Um, so that was all cleaned up. And um, since then, we've been keeping an eye on the site because one of our goals is to prevent re-encampment of these areas. The overall goal that the city is pursuing, um, you know, ideally we would end homelessness, but that's not an achievable goal, so our short-term goal is to um, prevent the establishment of large encampments such as this one that we had in De La Viega Park. While we in the county continue to work on the longer-term solutions of affordable housing, um, addiction and recovery services, mental health services, et cetera, et cetera. So that's uh, what has taken place there in the way of homelessness. Um, citywide, we continue to address camps in other locations as well. And at this point in time, feel that we don't have any quote-unquote large encampments across the city, um, that this approach has been um, effective to date. So we're continuing to, you know, contact areas where things begin to um, crop up and campers begin to assemble to prevent the establishment of, of further camps. At the same time, we're doing um, a lot of other work in De La Viega Park. We um, had some storm damage as well in the park uh, due to last winter storm. So we too are in the process of working with FEMA, applying for funds to make repairs there. Through our capital investment program in the city, we were able to make some upgrades to the ball fields, softball fields in De La Viega Park, put an infield irrigation system in um, to help maintain the quality of, of play in those areas. And we've also been working with an outside contractor on irrigation management to improve the irrigation of the meadow portion of the park um, and save water while maintaining the quality of the turf there. We've also been working with the um, the, uh, the Prospect Heights Firewise Group on um, some initiatives to help reduce wildfire risk in the area. And so we're um, we've done vegetation management, shaded fuel breaks, like Supervisor Koenig mentioned, um, elsewhere in the county along the lower portion of De La Viega Park. And then what we're working towards is a citywide wildfire resiliency plan that will help us prioritize where we should make these types of investments in vegetation management. And we know that De La Viega Park is on that list. There's quite a lot of vegetation management to be done there. So taking a walk with the Firewise um, group in early January to see some of the areas that they've identified as problematic and seek opportunities to work on those. And then they are also interested in the idea of um, connecting trails through the lower portion of De La Viega Park um, to activate the park, uh, to help prevent homeless camps from seeing that as a really desirable place to be, but also really just to improve circulation through the area, because right now we have this divide. You're either on the Branson Forty side of the park or you're on the Prospect Heights side of the park and you have to do a lot of work to try to get around between those. So ultimately, I think we agree with their idea and their aim of connecting um, that lower portion of the park, and that could possibly tie into a mid-county trail or other ideas um, for having broader connectivity for walking and maybe even biking in the future. So that's what's going on in De La Viega Park. Um, just wanted to mention a couple other things. Uh, you may or may not have seen, we are working on a big redesign for San Lorenzo Park, which is our park next to the county building and down in the city um, off of Water Street. So um, we've had respondents from the county on our survey that we put out, which is great, because this is a park that serves people throughout the region, and we'll have a Parks and Rec Commission special meeting um, in early January to um, hear the recommended alternative for that plan and um, would invite anyone who's interested to come and um, give their input to the commission on that. And then finally, another um, park of ours that serves a broader audience is Harvey West Park. And we have made a couple improvements there, done paving projects, turf management projects, and excitingly, we put in new um, ballfield lighting this last year, which is dark sky. Uh, I don't know that we want to say certified, but um, certainly an improvement over the previous lighting that we had done there, and it's more effective for the ballfield lighting, but less light pollution in the area. So that's been exciting. And we're finalizing the permitting process to install solar panels over the bleachers there, part of a citywide energy-saving initiative. So those are just some highlights of what's going on in Parks and Rec. Um, and I'd be happy to take any questions you have about that or um, anything else going on in city parks. Yes?
I'd like to go back to the homelessness.
Just to know, so because we have the online audience, you can see we've got uh, about ten people here on, online. Would you ask that, will you in-person speak into the mic so they can hear what you're saying as well?
So back to the homelessness question and uh, one that I think a lot of residents of Happy Valley and the Branson Forty neighborhood see are the folks who were living out of their cars and RVs along Branson Forty on the west edge of the park. Uh, right near the picnic areas and to the south. Can you tell us anything more about that? I have not Can you tell us anything more about that? I have not seen any in two to three weeks. But okay, a month, but I'm kind of wondering if we were, if you were effective at getting them to relocate. I was concerned about the large vehicle permit issue in the city and whether that was going to map over to that particular area. Could you tell us more?
Sure, and invite Supervisor Koenig to make uh contributions as well. Uh, as you mentioned, the city did just receive coastal um commission approval for its oversized vehicle ordinance and that went into effect in early December. So that is um prohibiting the unpermitted parking of oversized vehicles um throughout the city. Which does not apply to Branson Forty Drive. Um, so I'm glad to hear that you so far haven't seen any spillover from that in that area. Um, we've been working with the county on discussions about how to effectively. Address that and would like to um find a way to. Make explicit that uh parking is overnight parking is not allowed along there. And uh sign that appropriately and possibly install some sort of barriers to prevent that sort of parking. Um, but just because of the. Way Branson Forty Road finds this seam between city and county land, there's a lot of back and forth about um exactly. Who's responsible for which pieces of that puzzle. Um. George Washington Grove itself is closed for the winter and that may um, you know, eliminate one of the places that people like to congregate during the daytime. So anything else you'd like to add on that?
Um, well, most of it, thank the city for the partnership. Um, the trick here is that it is a county right-of-way. The county owns the road, but basically the property right off of the road is a city park. Um, and if you look at the signs along Washington Grove there, the no parking signs, you'll see they are. Santa Cruz City Ordinance on them and therefore that's why the city police are responsible for enforcing a city ordinance. Um, so we've been discussing um between County Public Works. And city parks, what the best solution is there along Branson Forty Drive where folks had been parking. Um, you know, it's kind of the, I think the easiest thing we can do is put up the signs and at least that way people know that they're likely to get a visit from.
They'll crash the signs out.
Yeah, I, right. Um. The other alternative we've been uh looking at is an actual physical barrier. Um, you know, of course you want to be safe with anything that was, is installed there so that. You know, someone's not going to run into it um and be seriously injured. Um, one solution we're looking at is kind of some of the split rail fencing. And really just trying to identify funds to actually be able to install that. Um, and again, you know, see if there's potential to, to uh. Cost share at the size of the city and the county.
Was it the cost that, the reason why they didn't do it last year when we brought that? Because that's what we have spoken about.
Yeah. I, I, and the superintendent can speak more to why uh it wasn't addressed sooner. I mean, yes, as far as cost to install something. Um, and just being able to identify that in our, in our budgets to make it happen quickly. Uh, but also. You know, really the city has been, and I have to applaud you guys on this. Um, I mean, they've had a momentous task, right? I mean. And I, I think it really demonstrates a uh change in approach. In a good way on the city's part to say, hey, you know, having these large camps for a long time is problematic in itself. You know, we know that. Yes, to a larger extent, we're moving the problem around, but at the same time, if we let the problem sit in one place, it grows. And we definitely saw that with. Uh, the Benchlins encampment in San, San Lorenzo Park, uh where kind of took, took on a life of its own. And so ever since then, uh since. Um, you know, uh abating that encampment, the city has been working really hard. I mean, all up through Pogonip. Uh, and Sycamore Grove and then um. What was the other? I mean Harvey West repeatedly. And so, you know, I think part of the idea was they wanted to make sure that. Uh, the dog park area encampment around De La Viega was abated at the same time as kind of the, you know, arguably satellite sites. Uh, where RVs were parking.
Now, can the police, Santa Cruz police, maybe once or twice a night just drive by just to make sure people aren't. Starting up again on, on the, where they got rid of everybody?
So I have talked with Lieutenant Carter Jones in the uh Santa Cruz PD, um and he's, you know, committed to keeping things.
Yeah, just to cruise by every couple of hours just to make sure, to, because the more. The presence of police is there, the more they're going to say, we're not going to come back, you know? I think they took it seriously at this time. Cause I, I was there, I drove by and I just pulled up, I almost started crying. Cause it was just wonderful to see. And I hope they find someplace to go. You know, but these people, I don't want to say these, they don't want to go to the armory. They don't want to go to any shelter because they don't want rules.
Yeah. Well, well, I will add that safe parking, I mean, it's sort of a very obvious solution. And it's one of those things that kind of falls in between the cracks of the different funding sources we have.
Where can you do that, that people are not going to feel infringed, you know, with?
Yeah, I mean, heck, the county's got some big parking lots. I would even argue that 91 Ocean Street is a great place for just, you know, whatever it is. Six PM to seven AM, it's not going to interfere with employee parking, but it would be a safe place to park. We could actually have social workers go check in with people, know their names, know their issues and try to help them. The challenge is that. Um, a lot of the money for addressing homelessness in our community comes through these state grants. And they don't really, they don't fund safe parking.
Right, right.
Right? And this gets back to the need for more discretionary funds locally. I mean. Uh, uh, it, it's one, a thing that we could contribute more funding to with an increased sales tax and that revenue is just having the discretionary money to do things. Uh, like temporary housing and safe parking sites. So um, I'm not trying to. Uh, I'm sorry if I sound like I'm trying to sell you the tax. I'm not. It's totally up to you, but this is one of the areas where some more discretionary funds could make a difference.
Sears Parking Lot too, you know, in Capitola. That has been vacant for how many years now?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, it sits there.
I mean, even the Emmeline campus has a sniffing parking area, makes sense of the Confluence of Health Services.
All I know is everybody up here is just thrilled. So thank you so much. My heart doesn't pound and I actually have just a beautiful, I, I feel really good driving back into town now. It's just, I still can't believe it. It's, it's amazing. So thank you both, all, all of you.
Right. Any other questions here? In-person audience? Yeah, go ahead, sir.
Um, um, I apologize if this is rambling and uh one of the uh. Things I don't know how to pronounce it, but I'll do my best. Um. I have a friend named Michelle Claus. And she has something called Guillain-Barre uh syndrome. Which is also called GBS. It's a condition where essentially your nervous system is eating itself. And she's been fighting this since she was twenty-four. She's now fifty-five. Um, she's been living in an RV um, uh, near church and Chestnut. And for a long time, it hasn't been a problem. She hasn't been a problem to the community. She doesn't litter, she doesn't have loud noise, she doesn't do anything to disturb anybody. But because of the new ordinance uh forbidding vehicles of a certain length and a certain width. Her RV violates both. And so they've been giving her tickets. Uh, these tickets have led to her inability to try and relocate. And get an apartment through section eight. Where her friend Holly can be her caretaker. Um, I live on Rincon Street and there's a gentleman in the building. Who lives in a wheelchair essentially, and he has a caretaker there all the time. And that's what Holly, her, uh, Michelle's friend is trying to do, but because of all these tickets. She's in a catch twenty-two. And I've called uh Office of uh Gail Pellerin. Um, uh Representative Laird uh and so forth. And I haven't gotten anywhere. One of the people I spoke with today, it's been about ten of them, suggested that I come to this meeting and speak with you because. This woman, she's not causing trouble. She's not trying to be a problem, but the city is not compromising with her or trying to work things out. And she's going to have to leave the community and I don't want that for her. She doesn't want to leave. But unless somebody can help her resolve this. Uh, with the city and or county or what have you, she's going to be in a jam and uh have to leave. Um, because of her condition, she has seizures, she has um tremors. She's not going to be able to even drive. She can't drive the thing or her friend has to drive or her father's going to have to pick her up. She's in a nightmarish situation and I was hoping. That you'd be able to speak to somebody in the city and or county to help her find a solution. And I don't even know what that might be, but I was just kind of throwing it out there because. Uh, her story is very, very compelling.
Yeah. Well, certainly I'm happy to talk with you more after this and see if there's anything uh we can do. Um, I mean, what you bring up is basically the primary argument against um, you know, ticketing as. A way to address homelessness and I mean, this, this, I mean, it comes up with anyone, even if they're camping in uh, you know, a park, say. Right? It's ultimately if you go out there and issue them a ticket because for illegal camping, then. Those tickets can ultimately stand in the way of them being able to do the right thing. So what's the right balance between. Encouraging someone to do the right thing and not preventing them from doing it. Uh, I mean, this is the crux of the, the challenge here. Um, you know, maybe it's something where if uh working with, uh, you know, we can work with some of the um folks. Helping to allocate some emergency section eight vouchers, um and other things. And if she is eligible for that and on the list and um. Then maybe that's something we could work to get her tickets expunged. Another option would be to look at um a new service that's coming into town. Um. Called Miracle, uh Miracle Messages that connect, uh you mentioned that maybe she has friends or family nearby. Um, if not, this would help connect her with friends or family. Um, to, you know, maybe just try to find a place for her that way. Um. But yeah, this, that is ultimately the crux of the issue is without, you know, more legal RV parking spots. Um, what, what should people do?
Yeah, if, if, if I may, please, um. Thank you for bringing this issue to our attention. Um, because my office is right in that area. I know the person of, of whom you're speaking.
Oh, wow.
So it's fortuitous that we're both in this room tonight. The way the oversized vehicle ordinance is structured, um. There are safe parking options available. Um, and I know we've been uh expanding that program with the enforcement of the ordinance. So I'd be happy as well to speak with you um after the meeting and make sure that we um connect you and your friend with our outreach team. Who can do their part to uh bring her into the safe parking program, which would provide an alternative place. Um, to park with her RV while sorting out these other issues and they may also be able to help out um connecting with some of these programs that Supervisor Koenig mentioned.
The obstacle that she's been bumping into with the overnight uh ability is that. Um, the, you can't enter the compound until, what is it, five PM? And you have to leave at seven AM. And since she can't drive, she's got to rely on somebody else to do that moving for her. And that's been a real problem.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I mean, I just learned about this yesterday, so I'm. I'm kind of over my head with it all, but I'm, she's a nice person. I'm just trying to help her. That's all.
Yeah, and um there is a, a longer term safe parking option, which has been full. Um, so I don't know what the turnover there is and how soon there may be an opportunity for us to base that program.
Yeah, but happy to get your contact information and work through it a little bit more later.
Maybe you have two different levels of tickets, an A ticket and B ticket. And an A ticket gets filed and gets reported and everybody sees it. And a B ticket is just held in like the city or county and no one ever sees it, but it's still valid.
Right.
So if you had two different levels, maybe you can circumvent this, you know, problem because it is a problem. And you, if you want to help people, giving them tickets is not going to help them.
Right.
They're just going to say, you know, so what? I got ten tickets now.
Right.
And they can't pay anymore.
Right. Thanks for the suggestion. The suggestion for those who didn't hear online was to have two different types of tickets, an A and B. All right, so there's no one else here and a person that wants to make a comment at the moment? Is there anyone online uh that has a question or comment? Or either myself or Superintendent Beck? If you do, just go ahead and. Click the little reactions button at the bottom of your screen, the smiley face plus and click raise hand.
We have a question here from Sunshine. See if we can unmute.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, thank you for the meeting. Thank you for answering questions. Um. Would, would you be the one that I would ask about the city parks usage of uh for soccer, adult soccer?
Sure. Go ahead. What's your question?
All right, awesome. Um, so there's a bunch of adults that have been playing soccer for probably twenty years. When our kids have grown up and played soccer in Santa Cruz, it's just been awesome. But it's super frustrating to find fields. It's like a battlefield. When these guys who are trying to organize adult soccer and they work so hard, all volunteer, they can't get a field in Santa Cruz. And they're there, but they're not available. And so I'm wondering if you could just give me some insight on that.
Um, yeah, our organized soccer fields are at Depot Park and at Harvey West Park. And those are generally reservable spaces. And a lot of the reservations go to our youth sports programs. And that may be part of the, the conflict, um as well as to, you know, some of the classes that we run. I know that there are pickup soccer games that take place at Depot Park in between times. Um. So, you know, it sounds like this group has already tried, um, you know. That route of just finding times that are available to reserve the fields. Um. And that's certainly the first recourse. We do have additional areas in our parks with open fields. Um, the meadow in De La Viega Park is also reservable and uh maybe more freely available. And then at some of our larger parks like um University Terrace Park or Frederick Street Park. There are large grass areas which are just available for, you know, groups to come and uh and play on if those are suitable. And then I'll also put one more plug in for a San Lorenzo Park redesign. Um, you know, one of the questions is what amenities should we be providing to the community? Would it be helpful if, for example, the area in the, the Benchlins, which we're calling the Riverlins? Um, were partially open lawn that could be used for soccer play? So if um folks in the community have. That interest and are having difficulty finding field space, um putting your voice into that redesign process, um might help bring that about.
So when you say field, like are you thinking of like an, it's just like one field because it's kind of like a little league? So we can, we can work even on a football field, like a high school football field and the schools have these fields. And we're willing, we, we're private citizens, we pay to play and we're happy to give that money to the schools. Because when they let us use their fields. And we pay them, that's great money for the schools, but it's really difficult to get them to agree to let us play. But it's, it's confusing to me because it's great money for them.
Right. Yeah, and I, I unfortunately can't help you at all with the schools.
Okay.
Trying to organize um league play.
Yeah.
Best thing to do is, you know, let's identify some possible times um that you can reserve. You know, those larger spaces we have at Harvey West and at um Depot Park, which, you know, are busy fields. I agree with that.
Is there availability there at Harvey West for a soccer league?
There is availability, but the question is, is there availability at the times that your league players are available? That, that can be the challenge.
Yeah.
But if you'd like to contact me afterwards, I can put you in touch, um or just contact our Parks and Rec. Um, main office and we can put you in touch with our sports fields and our um reservation staff and see what's possible to sort out.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and I will just add, I'll thank you for uh, for chiming in. I mean, we have a, I think a shortage of playing fields throughout the county. Uh, and yeah, ways to address that uh in mid-county and the, the Live Oak area as well.
It's a big problem and the kids like, you know. It's a big problem and the kids like, you know, there, there's all this soccer and baseball and whatever and they, they like the teams like fight with each other. Over these fields and then someone gets it and then someone doesn't. And there's just a lot of frustration there and it seems like it could be well organized in our county and city. To not have to be like that.
Absolutely. Yeah, it's a huge need and we are looking at ways to upgrade existing fields so that there can be more playtime. Every day and throughout the year.
Yeah, and there's not a lot of adult activity out there. So this is a great thing that I hope will be supported more. And make it easier for us to play than fighting for fields.
Well, thank you for calling in.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Big Joe. Go ahead. Joe, are you there?
Hold on, I don't know what happened.
Joe, you're unmuted if you'd like to make a comment.
It looks as if Joe lowered his hand. Joe, feel free to raise your hand again if you do want to ask a question. I don't have any other questions online.
Okay, great. Well, thanks everyone for joining us tonight. Oh, okay. Bye, means.
It has to do with the camping and venues for weddings and such. And on properties with what? Eight acres at least? The only problem that I would find up here is the traffic. The traffic is getting really bad as it is and. I, I see CHP once in a while coming by, but that's just to connect onto the, onto Highway 17. The speeding is absolutely horrible. The parents are, and now there's young children, small on their bicycles riding. And these people are not slowing down. It's dangerous. So that would be a big impact, don't you think, on this road? If there were places where people can start camping and. You know, having venues up here, it just kind of worries me because we do have some vineyards. And places up here and places to have weddings and such. So when do you think this may come up?
Probably the ability for people to get permits will start here sometime in the spring.
Oh, that's soon.
Now, of course, one reason that there's a permitting system and not just by right. Goes on any property over eight acres is precisely to make sure that they have. Parking and traffic plan that is sufficient and that won't overburden the neighborhood. So for example, we could, if there was. You know, looked like there was going to be a problem creating a condition on the permit that said. Well, you can't have people drive to the site. You have to have shuttle buses and where would people park, you know?
And that's, they've done that a few times at one of the vineyards up there.
Exactly. So those, that is a condition that could be included. The other thing I'll say is we know that people are using, you know. Vine Hill to Brant 40 and. Granite Creek has ways to avoid the traffic on the highway. And so. That's why we have been investing and improving the highway to try to incentivize people to stay on there ultimately because.
It's gotten better on Brant 40 though. And the last ways finally stopped sending people down here. I think the city got a hold and said. Just don't tell them. It's a shortcut from Vine Hill because it was getting very congested and it's been fairly well, but. There's just a lot of traffic, new people and, and, and the speed, it's horrible.
Of course, we deal with that a lot on SoCal San Jose.
I know, I know. There's more accidents there, I know.
Uh, we are undertaking, you know, kind of a safety plan for all county roads right now. And we've got a comprehensive map of where there have been injuries and accidents. And are prioritizing investments in places where there are hotspots. And looking at everything we can do to slow down.
Because we've always heard that there aren't enough accidents up here to get anyone to monitor, even the trailers for the speed. And I think, gosh, does someone have to die before? Just, I mean, even the presence, just like down at the park, the presence of having CHP up here just once a month. So people don't know, gee, I want.
Certainly.
I've almost been run off the roof because they drive at the speed limit. People get upset with that. Okay, that's all I was concerned about.
Thank you. Bill?
Yeah, one of the very upset my, who someone looking into is if you're going north on Highway one. And you turn off at Vine Hill Road, it's a little steep, one-way. Piece of pavement and on the left side, there's no guardrail. So if a person turns off and goes off the road, just maybe six inches. It flips over into 17. And there's been, I think, a couple of bad accidents there. So that someone that's not used to taking that, doesn't watch it carefully enough or is going too fast. And the difficulty is, is that it's one thing to have a accident with just the car on a road, you know, going and flipping. Down, you know, because they're, they're not careful. But it's quite another thing to have a vehicle flip and then go on to 17 where there could be a pretty big pileup. And it's just on the right. When you come up Highway one and you take the Vine Hill exit.
You mean Highway 17?
From seven, excuse me, Highway 17.
Okay, I'll look at that. I know we do have, uh. There's plans to improve safety along a number of the roads that come into Highway 17, including Vine Hill. I'll look and see if that's included as, as part of that.
Yeah, well, one easy way is to just drive up 17 and take that exit and then you'll see the problem. It's pretty apparent.
Thanks for pointing that out. All right. So no further questions online or here in the audience. Thank you everyone for coming out tonight. Appreciate all your questions and for joining us. Thank you again, Superintendent Beck. And have a happy holidays.
Thank you.
Good night.